All right, it is seven P M. I will go ahead and call to
This meeting is being recorded.
City Council virtual meeting for Monday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. And if we could go ahead and recite the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Roland. Bizzard.
Here.
Bellinger.
Here.
Weiss.
Here.
Reins.
Here.
Gilroy.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
All right, thank you, Barb. Um, I did not hear from Councilman Roland and we did not receive a call in. Oh, and there he is. So, uh, Barb, if you would go ahead and call his role. Well, let's see next, that way we can be accurate.
Roland, are you an attendant?
Here.
All right, thanks, Jeff. All right, now we have the opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. Hallie, do we have anybody in the audience tonight joining us?
No, we do not.
All right, thank you very much. I'll move right forward then. Uh, council meeting minutes for August twenty fourth. I'm looking for an approval unless somebody noticed something that needs to be changed.
Mayor?
Yes.
Did you do the approval of the agenda?
Oh, Barb, thanks so much. No, because I got sidetracked with, uh, the rest of the roll call. Looking for approval for this evening's agenda.
So moved, Weiss.
Thank you.
Supported, Bellinger.
Thank you. Uh, Barb, will you call the roll for the approval of the agenda for this evening?
Real quick. Oh, I had a little discussion here real fast on that real quick. We have WOW video service, uh, local franchise agreement, and then we also have it under Internet services under discussion. Is there any way to? I don't know, because I'm sure we're gonna have a lot of the same questions with the franchise agreement versus the discussion item. Roll that into one.
Corey, what would be your opinion on that? Is it, are they too separate and unique? Or do you want to, um, bump that discussion up to action?
Uh, yeah, we, we kept them as two unique things primarily because the video franchise agreement, as I mentioned in my email to council, uh, that first week after we had the comments at council and then in the memo, it, it really is a separate issue from Internet service. And I know there was a desire to talk about Internet services. Um, so I would, I would assume keep those separate and then
Okay.
go there, but that's just my, my two cents.
Right, thank you, Corey. John, does that satisfy you?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that's noted when we talk about it, that it's noted for video service and video service only then at that point in time.
All right, um, with that being said, Barb, will you call the roll for the approval of the agenda?
Bizzard.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
All right, and now on to the approval of the council meeting minutes for August twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty.
Make, make a motion to, uh, approve the minutes, Weiss.
Thank you.
Second, Reins.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion or changes that need to be made, Barb, will you call the roll?
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Bizzard.
Yes.
All right, Noah, did you have an opportunity to review accounts payable for this evening?
Uh, yes, I did. And, uh, Corey answered the questions that I had for him relating to several checks, and that should have been all forwarded and sent to you and the rest of the council. So with that being said, I would like to make a motion to approve check seven three five one eight dated eight twenty one, two thousand and twenty, to check seven three five eight one dated nine three, two thousand and twenty, and also approve check twenty six A dated nine four of two thousand and twenty for a total of two hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and seventy seven dollars and seventy nine cents. And the floor is open if there's any other questions that Corey can answer to other uh, council members relating other accounts payable.
Noah, I think you also have to include the A C H twenty three, twenty four, and twenty five. You mentioned twenty six.
Yeah, I had the twenty six A, and then I'm trying, I was trying to go down the, but if those are other ones, I'll make a friendly amendment to do that.
Okay, yeah, just because it's noted up at the top of the accounts payable register.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second, Smith.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for, for Corey. Um, on check number seven three five three six, it's for T C tree service. We actually have two checks going out to them. I was wondering if that was for general tree trimming, or did we have, um, some trees removed? It just seemed like a lot of, a lot going out for tree service in one, one time period there.
Sure, uh, Dan, I can answer that. Yes, that there was a number of right-of-way trees that have been either taken down or trimmed in the last month or so. Uh, frankly, I think you're gonna see probably one or two more invoices come through. Um, Noah actually has the, the packet, and that would tell us exactly where those trees were. Um, I know that there was a couple on High Street, uh, a few on Cedar, including a very large, um, I think it was an oak tree that was on North Cedar, um, which there, it was in the right-of-way. There was two residents that frankly, I think both loved the tree. Um, they hired an arborist on their own to come out and take a look at it. And it was determined that it was, it was in jeopardy. And so that one was a big one, and I think that represents, um, either the full amount of one of those checks or close to it. Um, one of the things I'll point out since that was one tree that this specifically happened with. Um, so while it had rot at the bottom when they took it down, the, the remainder of the trunk was in pretty good shape, and they actually were able to salvage, um, two trunks for future wood carving. Um, I think council's aware, you know, ten, eleven years ago, there was a wood carving project in McCormick Park out of ash trees, and several of those trees, um, you know, they've had rot happen on the inside. And I think we've had to take two or three of them down in the last year. And so, you know, the goal would be that to the extent we, we have some extra tree trunks, um, that we save them. And so we've got three right now. Um, and, you know, we'll see how many more come about. That's not the reason we're taking trees down. It's just, uh, I guess, a, an okay side effect that they might have a second life. And this tree on Cedar was just massive. It was, it was a really big old tree. Um, so there was two out of that. But, um, I can get more specifics as far as like where those were happening. But, um, this has been just part of our annual tree maintenance in the right-of-way, you know, from a protecting liability perspective and all those things.
That's fine, Corey, um, plenty of detail there, thank you very much. I was just trying to figure out if it was right-of-way trees or if they were trees on city property, that kind of thing. Thank you very much.
Okay, and just for clarification, the packet is, um, got rubber bands around it. It's in your box outside the office.
Oh, okay.
So otherwise I would have pulled it, but I dropped that off at, uh, six thirty this morning, so.
Thanks.
Now, second, uh, Noah's motion.
All right, thank you both. If there's no further discussion on accounts payable, Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Bizzard.
Yes.
Smith.
All right, thank you. All right, uh, moving right along, we're gonna go right into our action items for this evening. We have several. The first is the appointment of Caleb Moody to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term to expire six thirty, two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion to appoint Caleb Moody to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term to expire six thirty, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you.
Second, Reins.
All right, thank you both. Uh, Barb, will you call the roll?
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bizzard.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Our next action item is, uh, the first reading of the Williamson zoning ordinance text amendments related to Article Six on parking and Article Seven on landscaping and screening. Corey, uh, would you like to go ahead and fill us in on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so this is the next step in a process that began with the Planning Commission back in July. Um, they started a review of the parking ordinance, in particular the section that we have on community parking. Um, so there was a desire, um, really started out from staff's perspective when we've had a couple of issues in the past with, you know, how the ordinance defines community parking and when a new business or new building can, you know, basically rely on public parking to meet some or all of its parking requirements um, in the zoning code when there's like a site plant process. Um, and that process revealed a couple of areas that, you know, we felt needed some tweaking. Um, and so that was brought forward to the Planning Commission back in July in a work session format. Um, this is our third area that we've tackled in the last year. And we followed a work session, regular meeting, and then public hearing format. So it's a pretty extensive process. This one, it, there wasn't a lot of changes made. Really, the, the community parking was the most substantial. Um, and the, the main aspect there was we, we feel that we've better defined it. Um, and then there was a change made to how it's measured. Previously, um, you could count a community parking area if it was within six hundred feet of the business as somebody would walk on the sidewalk network. So that includes like a, uh, from sidewalk to a crosswalk if you have to cross the street. And the commission really looked at, you know, staying at six hundred feet, going up to a thousand feet, and making it either a radius or keeping the, the straight line path. And they opted to recommend a radius, um, which is easy to determine through, um, our G I S programming. You can basically add a six hundred foot radius around a property. Um, and that, that was in keeping with, you know, really two goals. One was to, to account for the fact that in our downtown district, which is called C one, um, that a lot of the buildings that exist already don't have parking lots. And so if you're a building owner that is changing over and you've got something new coming in, it's nearly impossible to provide parking on your land when your building goes up to all of the, you know, the property lines around it. And so it's, it's fairly common in a downtown district for businesses to rely on public parking, uh, to meet their public parking or to meet their parking requirements per the ordinance. And so we've cleaned that up. Um, there was a, a couple other minor changes where we've moved some information about parking lot landscaping into the actual parking chapter. Um, you know, I think one thing people using it, you know, you have to jump to a lot of different chapters to answer your questions. And so that's more of a move just to make it more efficient. And then probably the last thing that was, uh, you know, minor, but more so than just a small uh, formatting change is there was a, a requirement on Grand River that if you were between, I think, Mullet Street and the Deer Creek Bridge on Grand River, if you were to build a parking lot facing Grand River, you have to have, um, brick columns sep- separate, or I'm sorry, you have to have a decorative, a metal fence, uh, separated by brick columns, which we have an example of in, in downtown by D N W that the city put in as part of a street scrape project. And I think there was a general sense, uh, amongst both the commission and staff that, that may be just a bit onerous um, for somebody doing a, a redevelopment project. And so we, we didn't remove it, we left it as a suggestion, and there's certainly other screening requires and parking buffer requirements on Grand River. Uh, but that was a move as we tried to make tweaks to the code, um, that the commission ended up recommending. And so, um, long story short, this time we included all of the material that went to the Planning Commission. Um, if there's a desire to read through and kind of see how these things progressed. And then we, we stopped short of providing an actual transcript of the discussion. Uh, but we attempted to basically summarize the, the key points that were deliberated, uh, in especially in the work session where a lot of that happened. And so, um, you know, while there is, I guess, a point of view to that, because it, it's not a direct transcript, we're trying to answer that question from our last process of basically trying to provide more insight into how the commission, I guess, reached their recommendation. And so if there's any feedback on, on how to do that, um, if that's meeting what we're looking for or better in the future, we're happy to do that, too. Uh, so all of that said, this, tonight is the first reading of this ordinance that would amend these two chapters. Um, if council passes the first reading tonight, then it would come back at the second meeting at September, uh, for second reading and approval. And then it becomes effective, you know, so many days after, uh, council's vote.
Thanks, Corey. Uh, does anybody have any questions for Corey? I think that, um, Planning Commission has done a really good job over the past several months going through some of these ordinances, updating them, making the changes, um, so that we can be more current. So, uh, does anyone have any questions? Any hands up?
Huge shout out to staff and Corey for helping us put that together, and it was a big process.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Planning Commission's been doing a lot of work this, uh, past couple of months, and so I, I think they've done a great job.
And Tim, Tim Weiss gave great advice.
Yes, he always does. If there's no questions or, or no discussion for Corey, then I am looking for a motion to move this first reading forward.
I make a motion to approve a first reading of an ordinance to amend the City of Williamson zoning ordinance to revise Article Six as to parking regulations and Article Seven as to landscape regulations. Reins.
Thank you, Dan.
Good, Bellinger.
Thank you, Noah. If there's no other discussion, uh, Barb, will you call the roll for this?
Reins.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bizzard.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you very much. Next, we have the liability and property pool insurance renewal, and we've got Rachel here tonight, so I'll turn this over to Rachel.
Hey, um, as my memo indicated, uh, we went through an appraisal last summer of all city properties to ensure that we have the appropriate, um, coverages. And so in preparation of the budget this year, we had an, we budgeted for an increase. And I was really excited when we got the renewal back. Then we are looking at an additional two million dollars in property value, um, for a rate of about two thousand dollars as compared to last year. Um, that comes in about five thousand dollars under budget. And we are looking at getting another dividend check once we do renew. Um, this is the seventh year in a row that we have gotten dividends back, and it covers the, this year it covers the increase in the premiums. So I think it was a good renewal, and, um, we're looking to have you guys approve that tonight.
Does anybody have any questions for Rachel?
I just, just wondering real quick, is this basically because values in the city have just gone up that much? Or do we?
What we do is about every seven years, um, seven to ten years, M M L pays for us, all of their customers to have appraisals just to be sure that they have all of the, um, properties. We had a lift station that wasn't on the policy. Um, and we've had, um, contents that they not, might not necessarily have included before. Um, some of the property in the open, like benches or, um, trash cans or planters or things like that. Um, maybe not all of them had been accounted for. And so, um, that and the values have gone up, and replacement value has gone up as well.
Great, great question, thank you. Any other questions for Rachel? Okay, I'm looking for a motion to move this forward.
I'll make a motion to approve the Michigan Municipal League Liability and Property Pool Insurance Proposal for the policy term ten one twenty to nine thirty twenty-one in the amount of seventy-three thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars by Weiss.
Thank you.
Second, Smith.
Thank you both. If there's no further discussion or questions, Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Gilroy.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bizzard.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Reins.
On, uh, the next is the WOW video service local franchise agreement. And Corey, uh, you put together a good memo for us. I hope that we've contacted WOW and had them update the contact information so that the next time they send you a letter, it comes to your name, um, and not the previous city manager's name. But I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, let you take this, um, and, uh, give us your information.
Sure, thank you. So at the last meeting, we had the resident, um, Matthew came out and talked about the WOW internet concerns, which we had had some earlier that day. And the first thing I did was pulled out the franchise agreement just to see if, if it gave us any sort of leverage or uh, processes for complaints. It really didn't, but it was interesting. I, I noted that it expired actually today, nine fourteen, two thousand and twenty. And so in talking with WOW, he said they were a little bit behind in getting their, um, franchise agreement renewals out. So while it somewhat related to that conversation, it really is a separate matter, because this was part of a um, two thousand and six state law that regulates how local governments can enter into franchise agreements with video providers, so cable, T V. Um, the city has had a franchise agreement with WOW or its predecessors for, for many decades, as far as I can tell. Um, that basically allows them to use the right-of-way for their equipment. Uh, one thing that's interesting about this agreement is the state statute says that we have thirty days to approve the agreement, and if we don't approve it, it's approved. Um, so there's not a lot of leverage based on the statute from what I could tell. Um, and so we're bringing this forward and recommending that we approve it. Um, the only area that we have really any sort of say in is in setting the franchise fee. And so you can set that at a rate of zero to five percent. Our rate has been three percent for the duration of this contract. I believe it was three percent in the years preceding as well. Um, and so I, I actually, I asked around to some colleagues that have had franchise agreements come up. And one of the comments that they made is they said, well, if you raise it, be, be rest assured, the, the cable company will absolutely make sure all of the payers know that it was the city's decision to raise their fee. And so I, I thought about that in, in comparison to what we get and in comparison to what the fee is for. Um, and you'll see that I, I recommend that we just stay at three percent. Um, I would not recommend going lower than that. It does generate about twenty thousand dollars, uh, which is, you know, a, a nice revenue source for our general fund. Um, I would, I would note, though, that that revenue source has been declining very slowly over the years. Um, I think that's been largely attributable to households cutting the cord. So as, yeah, as entertainment has changed, folks are going to streaming options um, over the internet versus the traditional cable T V. And so we have seen that. It, it hasn't been as precipitous as I initially thought it might have been when I started looking like quarter over quarter, year over year, but it has been going down, um, and the, the current budget estimate reflects that. Um, so that's a, a introduction. Um, you know, we're recommending approval. And to the extent that there may be other questions about internet, that, that's why we have the other discussion item, you know, pending the, or from the comments that we had and some of the consternation that was out in the community a couple of weeks ago.
So I have questions for you, Corey.
Sure.
All right, the franchise fee is for only the video service, but according to my WOW bill, I'm almost a hundred percent positive I'm still being charged a franchise fee even though I only provide me with internet service. So my question for you there is, and also the internet service runs through the same line as what the cable T V and phone service would be, so I, that's one reason why I don't see how this would be a separate issue, so. Do you have any clarification on any of that?
I, I don't, John, I, I would have to, you know, maybe look at your bill or if you'd be willing to share it to see how they're charging that. Um, about a year ago.
I'm looking for one of mine right now.
Yeah. About a year ago or so, um, when we had, we had a meeting with WOW when we were changing the city services. And I remember we looked at that, that data that we get on a quarterly basis, and, you know, it, it says it's a charge on the cable services. Um, and so that's been my understanding. If there's something that exists to the contrary, we can certainly look at that.
Right. Tammy, if you don't mind me asking, are you using them only for internet as well?
Um, yeah, we do only have them for internet, but I'm gonna tell you right now, um, it, on the backside, it says taxes, surcharges, and fees. And it just says, um, forty-two cents, sales tax. It does not say anything about a franchise fee.
But it doesn't break the fees down either, does it?
Uh, yes, it does. It, it's got line items and stuff, so it does. So you'll have to look at the second page if you've got cable and see if there's a franchise fee, because it might just be case by case for people that only, you know, have both.
So I, I, yeah, I don't.
I'm looking at my bill right now as well. I have them for cable and internet, and it has it broken down. And it only mentions the cable franchise free for three dollars and one cents.
Okay.
It doesn't say anything about internet, but it specifically says cable franchise fee.
That's a little more clarification. If you don't have it, Tammy, and who does.
Yeah, yeah, and we've, we've had, uh, we had Dish for two and a half years, so I would, and, yeah. And I can, I can pull my bills going all the way back to then, so I would have to say that that's accurate.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
Uh, yeah, I'll just raise one real quick.
Yeah, Noah.
Uh, Corey, just to be aware, I know that, um, WOW also was sending our house bi-weekly letters recommending that we cut cable services. So their, their new business model is to get out of cable and get people to stream, so just be aware of that, so the money that you're looking at generating, it's gonna go down.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah, and Noah, Rachel had actually shared a personal anecdote that was very similar in, in her own house, and I was like, really? They're, they're telling you to use YouTube T V and, and all these things, so.
Yeah, they'll save you nine hundred bucks a year. Uh, cut your cable and
Right.
use Sling or use Hulu or whatever, so.
Mayor Gilroy?
Yes.
Jeff Roland has his hand up.
All right, Jeff, you're on mute, go ahead.
Yeah, so when the individual that, uh, came to us, the, the last meeting, the meeting before, talking about the problems they have been having, um, with the speed of everything, um, you know, I, I have battled for even pre-COVID, um, with them, because I only do internet with them. And I've been streaming for over, you know, a year and a half now, and for cable. But they're, they're, they've admitted to me over the phone, they do not have the infrastructure uh, to support the amount of, uh, internet subscribers they have if everyone is in an at-home environment working. Um, and every time I call, they have to then restructure my signal to make me receive faster service. And I've done enough now. I probably went through about five cycles since COVID started, where now I don't have to call anymore. And that was March, April, May. And I constantly run at, um, about seventy mags down, and I don't have a problem. And I don't know if that's because they pegged me as an annoying person, that I needed extra service, and so they just don't want to deal with me anymore. But they, they have, um, they're really just serving the, putting the oil on the squeaky wheel, if you will. And so it, it, that, that's really the issue. They don't, they don't have the infrastructure to fully support everybody at home. Everybody at home, all the kids at home now, uh doing Zoom. Um, it it's a problem, so I don't know if we just encourage. You know, our, our residents to just simply call constantly and continue to put the pressure on, but. It i- it's really an infrastructure problem that they have. It's, it's not so much that. You know, they can't provide the service um because they don't want to. It's, it's, they don't, they literally physically can't do it. And so I think if. We stick around with WOW and keep using them without, um, you know, and sign some sort of exclusive agreement. And I'm not sure that's exactly what we're doing, but we need some serious representations from them that, uh, you know, our residents are gonna get. You know, the service they're paying for.
Right, and I, and I think that, you know, that kind of leads into our discussion um a little bit later down the agenda. But um, as far as the cable uh franchisee agreement, video service agreement. Um goes, um, you know. Yes, we are gonna see a decline in our revenue from this um as more people do. I mean, we haven't. Used cable in probably over five years.
Mayor.
So far.
Yes, Holly.
Uh Attorney Perron has his hand up as well.
Yes, Tim.
I was just going to make sure you understand that this is not an exclusive franchise agreement. For the, for the video and also, yeah, the discussion was getting off topic of the franchise agreement.
Yeah.
So with this franchise agreement, whether we pass it or not, we're, they're still gonna charge it, correct? Does the city still receive that franchise fee? A percentage?
Go ahead, Cory.
My understanding of it, and Tim can chime in, is if if we don't pass it. It's approved anyway, but we have to affirmatively put in a number. And so I think we might run the risk. Of not receiving a franchise fee if we simply don't act.
Cor- I think you're correct, Cory. If I remember in years previous, and we've talked about that, uh, you know, years previous. We might as well take the money, you know, pass, pass the three percent, take what we can get. Because this isn't gonna solve the internet situation. That's gonna be, you know, something else.
Separate issue.
Separate issue, but.
And tha- and that's why I was bringing it up is cause I didn't know if one could be leveraged over the other. But if it can't be leveraged, then, you know.
No, absolutely, Jeff. I agree with you on that. I mean, that's why I asked when we approved the agenda if this would be. Topic and that's where, you know, when they bundle their services together and they run it through the same infrastructure. To me, it is, but I mean, that's just my opinion, so.
Any other questions for Cory regarding the franchise agreement?
No, the only thing I would like to say is I would like to see the percentage raised up then, if that's the case, only for the fact with the decline. Um, and the sense that we have council members that have received letters stating they're trying to get away from cable service. That, like you said, we get what we can get when we get it, but it's also, you know, they wanna throw it back on the city. Well. I have a feeling that it's gonna raise a lot of phone calls to them and flags and it has to do with their service altogether, so.
Wouldn't it also be transferred over to the customer and our residents would end up just paying higher prices?
I think that's what Cory did state, that yes, that gets passed on to the customer.
I mean, everything's passed on to the customer. I I don't know. I mean, that's just, just a suggestion, but it's.
I'm not in favor of raising the percentage because it's just, uh. It's not taking anything out of WOW, it's just taking more out of our residents um for a. Or negligible, uh negligible amount, but it's like a PR.
You're, you're right, Dan, and I think, you know, as, as the number of residents decline. If we increase the rates, then it's those few residents that are making up the difference so that we can try to, you know, end up with more revenue. I would have to say keep it at the three percent as well. Um, eventually, it's probably gonna, you know. We're gonna see that num- that, that revenue stream slowly decline, you know, as more people do jump ship.
Tim had his hand up.
Yes, Tim.
Uh, there's also the risk that if you raise that fee, that will give people the impetus to go ahead and and leave the service.
Right.
Though it could wind up backfiring on you.
Right.
Increasing revenues. And it is exclusively passed on to the uh customer. Uh, so the cable company will indicate that it's, is that city councils. You know, behest, and that they are not raising their rates.
Right.
Is that, is that whole franchise fee, are we re- or receiving upper three percent of that franchise fee or?
Three percent of the rates they're charging.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Like I said, I'm good with, I'm good with whatever. I just throwing it out there for discussion, so.
Okay. Thank you, duly noted. Uh, is any other questions or concerns, or can I get a motion to move this forward?
Uh, just real quick before we leave the topic, I, are we actively uh soliciting or. Um, looking into other uh providers and and seeing what. Uh, options they might be providing to us to uh build their infrastructure. I, I know it's costly for them, but. You know, we're a growing community and, you know, is, is there anyone else out there, Cory, that, you know, whether it's Verizon or, you know. Time Warner, or whatever they're calling themselves these days? Anything like that out there?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't, no, we have not done that. Um, that's partly why, you know, we wanna have this discussion item. Um, I think certainly from my perspective, you know, internet is not a city service. Um, and so even with, you know, the complaints we got, you know, I'm, I'm careful about how, how much we really spend on that. Because it, it's not a service we provide, and yet it's a key piece of economic development. It's a key piece of retaining. Households in your community. And so I think if there's a direction from council to pursue that, and that's where. You know, time should be spent. Um, that, that's why we have the discussion item. If there's a sense of council that that's important. It would be helpful for staff to have that direction and, um, you know, know where to pursue that.
Mayor, are you looking for a motion for the action item before we can move on?
Yes, I am.
I make a motion to approve the Uniform Video Service Local Franchise Agreement with Lululemon. Millennium Digital Media System LLC doing business as well, internet, cable, phone, with a local franchise fee of three percent.
Thank you. Thank you very much. If there's no further discussion, uh Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Roland.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bizzard.
Yes.
Ballinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Rhines.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes. All right, thank you very much. Our last action item for the evening is five eighteen Mill Street easement agreement. Cory, thank you for the memo. We've had a couple different talks about this, so I'll let you uh go ahead and uh jump right in.
Sure, so I think for this, it would be helpful if folks could turn to page eight E, page four. It's a certified survey map. Um, that would be, that tells the whole story, basically. Um, so if you're looking at that page. Um, you'll see in the bottom right corner of the survey map, it says HSE number five eighteen. That's the house, five eighteen Mill Street. About three years ago, the house was going through a transaction, and they had to get a survey done, and they've. Discovered that the house encroaches into the railroad street right of way. So about. You know, almost to the bottom of that house from corner to corner, you can see there's a dashed line. That's the right of way line. So at some point in the twenties or the thirties, whenever this house was built, um, it was built on top of the right of way. And in order for the current owner to get financing, they had to get this okayed by the city, and the city granted them an easement that basically said they can keep the house there. Um, you know, encroaching on the right of way until such time that the house is demolished for any reason, then they, they can't build it right there again. So the new owner, um, as part of that deal, they had to take out a fence, which is still shown on the, the map. Um, if you go down toward the railroad street, sixty-six foot wide right of way, there's a, a line that's got some Xs in it. That's. The symbol for a fence. So that fence was taken out. And they approached the city, cause they said they're on a corner lot, they'd really like to have their backyard fenced in. Typically with a backyard, people like to build a fence up to the corner of their house. Um, if they can, or they might go out from the corner of the house. And so in this case, in order to build a fence on their property, they, they would basically have to be, you know, the start of their southeast corner. Would be eh ten feet into their house. And so she asked if there was any sort of leeway the city could grant. To allow them to basically corner off their backyard from their house down to their garage. The garage that's shown in the left corner of that map. Um, their property line is basically about a foot off of that, and so she asked, you know, for some leeway there as well, instead of. You know, going from the corner of the house to the corner of the garage, um, cause you wouldn't be able to open the garage doors if there's a fence, you know, right at the property line. So, long story short, um, we worked out this deal where. She could basically be eight feet off of the garage going to the encroachment of the house with a fence. Um, the resident would appreciate that, they'd get some privacy. Uh, we feel like the city's long-term interests are protected because the easement agreement basically says that. If we ever, for whatever reason, have to maintain the right of way or the infrastructure in it, the fence has to come down at their expense, and they recognize that. They're in the right of way. Uh, there is a storm sewer that's about twenty feet south of the garage. And so the eight feet was a, a. About as far as we felt we could go, where we still have got a, a good amount of distance uh to maintain the storm sewer if needed. So the request tonight is to authorize the approval of the agreement, and the mayor and the clerk would sign. Um, and I think it would, it would help a resident out in a, in a very unique situation. Uh, we would not normally permit, you know, such an encroachment in the right of way, but given the unique circumstances of her house. Um, we're recommending approval.
Thank you, Cory. Does anybody have any questions for Cory? I think it's a very unique circumstance, so, you know, trying to help out a resident is always a good thing.
Just real quick.
Gene.
We're extending that, they got the fence there. If anything happens on top of that property, like they're having a backyard party and it's in that easement area and somebody gets hurt or whatever. Is there any legal exposure to the city for them coming after us, cause it was technically within that? Easement property.
Tim.
I don't see a, any, any real exposure to liability. All we're really allowing them to do is to maintain the fence there. It doesn't encroach any further than the house already does. Um, the city does enjoy governmental immunity from any tort liability. Um, so it really wouldn't be any different than anything else that somebody does in the public right of way.
Okay, thank you.
As far as liability issues.
Thank you, Tim. Any other questions for Cory regarding this? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve easement agreement with five eighteen Mill Street to allow a fence to encroach into the railroad. Street right of way, as described in the attached easement agreement. Smith.
Thank you.
Second, White.
Second, White, sorry, thank you. If there's no further questions, uh Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Smith.
Yes.
Bizzard.
Yes.
Ballinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Rhines.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Roland.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. That concludes the action items for the evening. Now we'll move right into our discussion item, which is going to be the internet services for WOW. We've already kind of touched upon it just a little bit. Um, Cory, I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over to you. Um, just because you've done some research and fact-finding and everything regarding it, um, based off of the. Uh, resident that we had join us and, um, all of our experiences with the internet service and everything, so.
Yeah, so really where I thought this might go is exactly what Jeff Roland brought up, which is, you know, how does a community. You know, try to improve its options for the residents and the business community. And, and it's not something that I personally have a lot of familiarity with doing, although I know that there are communities that do that. Um, and I think a lot of times it's done as an economic development move, um, as you're trying to recruit, you know, big businesses or small businesses. Um, that need reliable internet, you know, that's, while it's not directly a city service. Um, there's certainly an impetus for the city to, you know, help with that process. Um. I, I do say, you know, what Jeff explained uh with his experience in talking with uh Matthew that week. You know, I found that there was a lot of folks on Winding River Drive that were having that issue for about a week there. And I think what ultimately helped with the issue was all of them bugging WOW constantly. Um, and not necessarily, you know, our call to WOW. I, I think that might have just reaffirmed that it was an issue. Uh, but between the resident pressure and then I think what they did is they contacted the Michigan Public Service Commission. And I think that helped get a resolution maybe a little bit quicker than it otherwise would have. So that tracks with a lot of. You all's experience as well. Um, so, you know, one of the things that came up as I was looking into this is. You know, there was an era, I believe, where you, you did have exclusive franchises, more so for. Uh, you, you know, your cable TV, and what that allowed a company to do was to in- invest in the infrastructure. And there was a guaranteed return because folks in that community could only select that one TV provider. And the two thousand six legislation that created that Uniform Video Act, you know, it says right in the heading, one of the intents was to promote competition. And so I think that's probably one of the challenges that we would face is, you know, a company to come in and extend whatever infrastructure they have to do. Without that guaranteed, you know, source of income if they can't get people to switch. Um, you know, could be problematic, but that's, that's just my kind of initial high-level speculation. Um, you know, to, I think it was Jeff Roland's point earlier, you know, we have not directly pursued trying to. Recruit other companies to town or spent much time on that. Uh, but certainly if there's a desire from council. To, to really push that issue, you know, we can do that, and I think we can rely on the experience of some other communities that might have had success doing that. How they went about it.
Okay, questions for Cory?
Bizzard here, I have some.
Okay, and then I saw Dan's hand too, uh, so we'll start with you, John.
And I'm sorry, I don't know how to do that on Zoom here yet.
That's okay.
Uh, real quick, what's the possibility? I mean, we're looking at the I ninety-six corridor and trying to bring the businesses in and then. With the internet services and things like that, I just think we need to have other options and uh more reliable service. Now, I don't know what the possibility of soliciting somebody to come in or putting it out there that we're looking for somebody to come in. And get anything. I don't know how to even, how we'd go about doing that. Is that feasible? That's my question.
Yeah, John, I, I, I think the answer is, I think so, uh, but as I mentioned, you know, I've not, I've not, you know, had the pleasure of trying to do that in a. Previous community yet, so, you know, I think it's something that we'd have to take some of the information tonight and do some fact-finding.
Okay, and then the other thing was, I remember years ago, I thought they looked at trying to get a citywide internet service set up where. We would be wifi all downtown or something like that. I don't know. If that's even possible. I know Williamson Township has a tower or something set up and they're able to go through. And residents that can't get WOW, they're able to get an internet service, and I don't remember what it's called, but I don't know.
Freedom Net.
Freedom Net, okay. Dan, I should have asked you to begin with.
Hey, sweet pea, how are you doing?
You wanna know?
Oh, hey, no, okay, all right, so.
Um, John, are you, you still, still going or you?
No, go ahead.
So, I, I would love to see some competition for WOW to come in, but I see that as a, uh. As something that's gonna be a long-term project, something that's not gonna happen immediately within the next few months. I would love to see, uh, if we somehow chatted with people at uh MSU. Because you know they have to have, I, I don't know if they have fiber over there or what they have. But uh, you know they have to have a, a good internet service provider over there and what it would take to. To get some, cause that's relatively close. When you're talking infrastructure, it's still in decent ways, but it's only East Lansing, so I was curious about that. But in the short term, do we know who at the state level regulates internet service providers? And do we think it would be a beneficial. To, to have the city contact whoever at the state level regulates internet service providers. To have them look at what's been going on with WOW in the city to see if that would possibly light a fire under them to improve. Their service in the city.
Well, I, I agree with that, Dan, but the other thing I'm looking at is, even if it is.
Well, I I agree with that, Dan, but the other thing I'm looking at is, even if it is a long-term project, I mean, this is the wave of the future, this is where things are going and.
No, I totally agree. I'm just saying is contacting whoever regulates them, something that we could get wow to improve the service in the near term while we're trying to get them some competition.
Mayor Gilroy, Jeff Weiss has his hand up, and I think Gene Smith also is waiting to speak.
Alright, uh, go ahead, Jeff Weiss, and then we'll go to Gene. And I apologize about that, you guys. My mom's having surgery tomorrow morning, so I had to take that phone call, so. My apologies.
I I I would support i- as a city, having the staff um solicit other internet providers because I, it's an issue. I mean, we've called many times here, like like everybody has in the city. And does anyone know what the village of Whoville uses or a village of Dansville? Uh, some of our neighbors, are they all uh hostage by wow, just like we are? But I I think it's a like, uh, John said, it's a long-term commitment. I think that we have to invest in. And I know that wi- without putting something out there to the wi- with another provider to provide them some uh financial gain, it may be a a long process, but we need to look at it because it's um, we need that infrastructure, especially a city our size, not to have a reliable internet provider.
I would agree with uh Jeff, and I know Rachel, there's been a couple times over the past years, we've actually reached out and people, you know, basically what your guys' findings were was that, you know, the cost to bring something into Williamson, these big companies weren't interested in it, but you know, it's it's five years later now. So, it might be, you know, worth the the research again.
And sorry to interrupt, Tammy, but think about this, everybody's working from home now.
Yep, exactly.
The direction that things are headed. I mean, I work at a GM facility that's not even fifty percent staffed right now and there's no talk of bringing more people back on site because they can work from home. So, I mean, I agree with Jeff, it 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 stinks to put stuff on the city's staff to do this, but at the same time, we're so close to downtown Lansing, MSU. Where are these people gonna wanna live? They're gonna wanna live on the outskirts, or maybe they do live on the outskirts and I just, I don't know. It, I'm just, this is a good discussion, that's all I can say, so.
Absolutely. Gene, you you had a question too.
So one of, you know, I I moved into town from a rural area and one of my major takeaways as to why I wanted to come into town was I wanted the internet access, right? Joke's on me with wow, but um, I think, you know, competition breeds excellence, right? So it is definitely something that we'd wanna look at, but I I think a caution I would also throw out is if we do this search and wow knows we're doing this search for other providers and other providers turn it down, it may embolden wow to just be like, they're stuck with us, you know, like we we can do it. You know, we don't have to provide that extra service or whatever because they have no choice. And I wouldn't want them to be in that kind of scenario. So I think if we did this, we'd have to be pretty committed as a council that we'd wanna really work with another company that, you know, was able to come in and provide that that better service or a second choice. And they come in and I think people fall over themselves to jump ship to another, you know, provider and it may cause wow to up their service. And then now you've got two good services to pick from in the city. But we, I think we really need to be committed that, you know, we're in for the long haul and we'd we'd really like to work with another company, otherwise we're not.
Well, and I think we all realize too that if a new company were to come in, it's not something that's going to happen overnight. They're not gonna be able to, you know, set up quickly. It will, it would take time, but I think, you know, we should definitely go down that road of of investigating who would have interest in it.
I think we should solicit our industrial park for a new internet service provider headquarters.
That would be great. Get right on that, John.
So, quick question.
Yes.
To Gene's point, I mean,
Yes.
I I thought Tim said that we we're not in an exclusive agreement with wow. So if we're out there soliciting other organizations, that is okay, right? I mean, w- we don't, we're not exclusive to wow, are we?
We're not exclusive for the internet provider. Um, the franchisee agreement is only cable, so you're absolutely right, Jeff. If somebody wanted to come in and put money into our community to build their infrastructure for internet, that would be one hundred percent okay. We've just had in the past, people tell us. Uh, so Corey, when would this contract expire for the uh for the video franchisee agreement?
Um, that is a ten-year term.
For cable, and we know that people are dumping cable.
We, can we ask the attorney, that I I thought he said this, this is not an exclusive franchise agreement.
That's correct, it's not exclusive, so other franchisees can come in. Under the same uniform terms, and then we decide what franchise fee will be.
And they could do video too, right?
That's what we're talking about is the video.
Okay.
For the franchisee agreement.
Franchise agreement.
But we could sign another franchise agreement with like, say, uh Verizon or uh, anyone else that wants to do video and internet, right? And not have any restrictions there?
Or Frontier. I mean, we all know that Frontier has, you know, the landline phone, um, in town. And I think they have internet.
What's a landline phone?
We still have one, John. Hooked up to the facts, and my parents have one too.
In other words, we have the flexibility to go and solicit anybody and sign other agreements, correct?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay. I mean, what's the downside if we went and did that, Corey? If if we just said, I mean, all all we're looking for is proposals, like what? I'm just curious, you know, at this point, it sounds like we looked into something five years ago. I mean, what would these companies now offer? I mean, uh, you know, do they just want a percentage share? I mean, and it could be no skin off the city's back. I mean, you know, cou- could this, i- is there a way to maybe make this work? But we don't know what we don't know, right? So, maybe getting some proposals might be worth the RFP phase, right?
Yeah, I I think the worst case is that you just get a bunch of no's, that, you know, we're not interested, or it's not economical for us to do that.
But if we.
They'd be surprised during the whole COVID situation.
Maybe they'd be enthused.
Right.
I think now's the time to start doing it because think about it, everybody's at home.
I I agree.
If we're gonna do uh do something, um, what this pandemic has showed us is that the the need for the infrastructure and for our wifi, it's not there, a- and we need to act. I agree, I, I don't know if it involved our P process, but um something's gotta be done.
Corey, can you uh start putting this together and um just keep us, you know, in the loop, how it progresses for you and for the staff as you reach out? Or determine how you want to reach out to um providers?
Yeah, I I think what I'm gonna start with is, like I said, I've gotta do some fact finding. This is sort of new territory for uh, my city manager toolbox, uh, but part of being a city manager is you're flexible and you you have a lot of different tools. So, um, I think that's where we'll start and, you know, like I said, I I know, you know, whether it's been our, um, you know, conferences I've been at or our our trade magazine for management, like, there's always articles about broadband and connectivity, you know, but a lot of it's always focused on rural areas. And and so I can't say that I've always, you know, honed in on those topics. Um, but I know that there's, you know, literature and there's there's resources out there, and so that's where I'll start and um, you know, I I think I hear there's a pretty broad consensus to to do that. So, I think I've got enough comments and direction to to move forward.
Sell that industrial park.
Alright, alright, well, thank you, uh, good discussion, and and definitely, I think this is probably one of the uh I think this will be the time that if this were going to happen, it would happen during COVID, just because, like you said, uh, Jeff, um, if there's a bigger demand for it now, and everybody needs to have the connectivity. I know for me personally, I probably, you know, we don't even know if we'll be back on campus for spring semester. So, the extended working from home, you know, you end up using your, the resources you have. And I think that's like that for a lot of people, and especially the kids too, we've gotta uh try to have better service for them. Um, moving right along on the agenda, we did not receive any correspondence, um, so I'll go right to department head reports. Corey, you always provide such a great uh uh memo. Does anybody have any questions for Corey on this, or is there anything else you would like to add, Corey?
Nothing further.
Okay, any questions for Corey from council? Alright, we've got Chief with us this evening as well. Hi, Chief.
Hi, guys, I do not have anything to report.
Alright, well, thanks for being here. Uh, we did receive the um AGS uh report for what's going on and you know, people are are still uh doing stuff commercially and residentially, so that's always good to see. So, um, if there's no questions regarding anything on that, I will move to our committee subcommittee reports. Uh, we did have the first reading from planning, um. Did you wanna add anything else uh for what's going on in planning? Gene? No?
No, y- you you got our, you got our big prize tonight.
Alright, yeah, alright, great. Anybody else have anything that they'd like to share, um, from any of their boards that they're sitting on? I have not seen any hands raised up. Uh, Holly, did we, did we have anybody join us for audience participation?
Uh, we had one person join us there on here. I don't know if they'd like to speak at this time.
I think it's an, yeah, I ca- I saw it come up. Okay, I don't see them coming off a mute, so I'm assuming not. Oh, yeah, okay.
Hi, this is Monica Schaefer.
Hi, Monica.
Hi, yeah, I just wanted to um to come on and, you know, just gain insightful information on what was going on in the city. And um, I think the main thing there that you guys are talking about with um, with your system, with the the access for computers and is so needed. And tell you, just going door to door in our township right now, it is the hot topic. So I applaud you on going forward with this and and um, and I, it was a very insightful conversation. So thank you so much for allowing me to listen in.
Absolutely, thanks for joining us tonight, Monica, appreciate it.
Thank you, yep.
Alright, I'm gonna move around uh the board for council member comments, and I'll start with uh my top corner, Dan Rhines.
No comments tonight.
Alright, Gene Smith.
Uh, I'm all set, guys, thanks.
Alright, uh, let's see, Jeff Weiss.
Uh, just thanks to Corey and city staff. I know this internet thing's gonna be a beast to tackle and uh, they're already overwhelmed, but thank you for taking it on, it's needed.
Thank you. Noah Bellinger.
Uh, no comments at this time.
Alright, John Bizzard?
Yeah, I wanted to say thanks to uh the city staff as well, reiterate what Jeff said. And I also wanna say thank you for following up on those donation bins.
Alright, and uh Jeff Roland.
Yeah, just echoing uh Jeff and John's comments that, you know, i- i- it is a huge scenario and but it's much needed, and look, we we don't know, we don't know, and if if we don't get quotes and uh, you know, other uh, you know, aspects from uh various vendors, you know, we don't know what we could even do. So I I think it's worth the adventure, so, thank you.
Alright, and uh, as far as my comments for the evening, um, I have to say the exact same thing, you know, being on council for the past five years, um, I don't think we've ever seen our system stressed as much as we've seen it um, this year because of the COVID nineteen, where it's um really put a lot of people in their homes and especially with their kids. So, I think anything we can do as a community to to help improve that is um huge. So I look forward to hearing uh what uh Corey and the staff have to come back and and give to us. And now I'm gonna go ahead and uh I'm going to move us out of um our open session and we're, I'm gonna make a motion, or I'm looking for a motion uh to go into closed session uh for a strategy discussion regarding collective bargaining as permitted by MCL fifteen point two six eight, or yeah, two six eight. Alright.
Second, second.
Alright. Alright, uh Barb, will you call the roll to um go into closed session, please?
Roland.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bizzard.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Rhines.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes. Alright, I will see you all in breakout room one. Thank you.
This meeting is being recorded.
We are back in uh open session, and I'm gonna uh ask for uh Attorney Northford to um read the uh uh the action request.
Thank you. Um, it would be a motion to ratify the tentative agreement reached with the non-supervisory police bargaining unit and authorize the mayor to sign documents to memorialize changes in the collective bargaining agreement upon review and approval of civil council.
Thank you so much.
So moved, Smith.
Thank you.
Rhines.
Alright, are there any questions?
Yeah, i- is it an actual agreement or is it tentative agreement? I was confused about.
Final agreement. We're ratifying the the tentative agreement, which will get us to the final agreement.
Thank you, thank you for that question, Jeff. If there's no other questions, uh, we have a s- a motion uh and a support. Uh, Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Roland.
Yes.
Bizzard.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Rhines.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Alright, well, thank you very much for that. Uh, Matt, thank you so much for being here this evening for that, appreciate it. And uh with that, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting now at eight thirteen. Thank you all very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you.